Good afternoon to everybody. This is a meeting of the Planet Zoning Commission, City of Laredo. Today is June the 16th of 2022. Calling this meeting to order. First item we have is roll call.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Erasmus Villarreal?
Present.
Jorge Dominguez. Mike Barron. Abraham Luvo.
Present.
Johnny Narvise.
Present.
Yu Xin Huang. Larry Doalina.
Here.
Daniela Salapaz.
Present.
Ana Villarreal. For the record, Mr. Chairman, you do have four. All right. Can we have a motion to excuse those commissioners that are absent?
So will.
Motion and second by Daniela. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Can everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which was established, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is the approval of the minutes of the meeting of June the 2nd of 2022.
So will they be approved?
We have a motion and we have a second by Daniela. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we have anybody signed up for citizen's comments?
No, Mr. Chairman, we do not.
Thank you. All right, moving on to public hearings and recommendations of an ordinance. The first one is amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Laredo by rezoning approximately 7.2852 acre tract of land situated in Dolbyna Rodriguez survey. This is located south of International Boulevard and west of Springfield Avenue from an R3 residential district to an R2. All right? Who's making? Here we go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
From an R1. Yes, to an R2.
To an R2.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, applicant is Springfield Investments LLC. Owner is Amanti Legacy Rosewood LP. Applicant is Enrique, I'm sorry. Enrique Frost is the representative. Property description, approximately 7.2852 acres, located south of International Boulevard, west of Springfield Avenue. The zone change is from an R1 to an R2. The proposed use is a multifamily, 99 unit, three-story elevator elevator serve elderly development. Letter sent 14 for zero against zero. Location view? Area view? Street view? Zoning overview? Future land use? Staff recommendation, staff support to propose zone change. Proposed motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change? In favor of the zone change?
Hello, my name is Alyssa Flores. I work for Madhouse Development, who is the developer on this deal of Amanti Legacy Rosewood. I just want to be really thankful for staff. They've helped me get here today. This is my first deal in Laredo, and we're really excited to get this one done. We think it's perfect for the community. We're really happy with the location. So yes, we are in support of the motion today. But if you have any questions, I'm absolutely happy to answer them.
Is this a tax credit?
Yes, sir. 9% tax credit.
Is it a mixed use or what is it?
It's just elderly. It's just elderly development, multifamily residential.
It's not a 202?
I'm sorry?
It's not a 202?
It's not a 202?
No, sir.
Anybody else have any questions?
I have a question for staff.
All right.
I like the concept. As far as traffic impact analysis, as far as like with the area being multifamily development going across on the north side, any impact there or any concern?
We don't feel there's a concern, especially with the width of the the street, International Boulevard. And we also have Springfield that will be connecting through. So it really is turning into a nice little area.
This is a public hearing.
Is it a section eight project?
No, sir, it's not. It's just 9% tax credits. We applied in March of this year. We did receive city support in, I think, January, and we also received support from Representative Raymond.
But you're gonna accept section eight vouchers. So it's kind of like a mixed use market rate?
It is. It's just 9%. It's 30% AMI to 60% AMI. I think we have a couple of market rate units as well. Thank you.
Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor? In favor of the zone change? In favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against the zone change? Against the zone change? All right. Let the record reflect that Commissioner Villarreal has just arrived. Thank you. All right, what are the wishes of the commission?
I move to approve.
We have a motion from Commissioner Dovalina and a second from Commissioner Narvise. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item is amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Laredo by rezoning approximately 4.84 acre tract of land. This property is located south of Saunders Street and east of India Avenue from a B3 to a B4.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, applicant is AKL LLC. Owner Ricardo M. Villarreal is the representative. The property location is approximately 0.84 acres located south of Saunders Street and east of Indiana, India Avenue.
India.
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 India. India.
Indiana is in Hillside?
Yes, yes. The zone change is a B3 to a B4. The proposed use is commercial. The applicant did not identify the proposed commercial use. Letter sent 14 for zero against zero. Location view? Aerial view? Street view? Zoning overview? Future land use? Staff recommendation, staff support to propose zone change. Proposed motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have a question before we go on with the public hearing.
Yes.
Is this in the runway protection area for the airport?
It is.
It is. Yes, it is.
Well, there's no caveats. There's no special provisions for this property?
Even when they come into the building department, there are some caveats that they would have. I mean, they would have to meet some building requirements, but that would be during the building stages.
But is that only if it's residential and not commercial?
That's correct.
Yeah, but that's noise attainment. This is airport. This is runway protection for overshot.
B4 does not allow residential.
There is a height restriction that applies to... Do we have an airport zoning board?
No. An airport?
Never heard of it.
Zoning board?
Yes.
No, sir. We do not. It's handled through the airport.
So it's only the smaller general aviation airports that have it?
Probably so. All right. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Ricardo Villarreal, here representing the owner. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. There is some restrictions for commercial, as you were saying, Mr. Chairman, but their deal more with height and on the noise, it's mainly on the residential end. But just height for, basically for the restriction.
Does anybody in the commission have any questions for Mr. Villarreal? Thank you, Mr. Villarreal. Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor? In favor of the zone change? In favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against the zone change? Against the zone change? All right. What are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion to close public hearing and support staff recommendation for the zone change.
We have a motion by Commissioner Narvise and a second by Commissioner Luvo. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. Thank you. On the next item, is this gonna be tabled or is it just a master plan? So, Mr. Chairman? Only a master plan? All right. Okay, so this next item is amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Laredo by rezoning lot 1, block 1, Lomas del Sur, unit 6, located at 3402 Lomas del Sur Boulevard from a B1 to a B3.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, applicant is Fondera Point Holding LLC. Owner is Mr. Kettler. I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce his first name. Mr. Kettler? Ronnie? Ronnie? Yeah. Keller is the applicant. Property location is lot 1, block 1, Lomas del Sur subdivision, unit 6, located at 3402 Lomas del Sur Boulevard. The zone change is from a B1 to a B3. The proposed use is commercial, Ace Hardware. No, Ace Hardware Store is also allowed on a B1 zoning district. Letter sent 12 for zero against zero. Location view? Aerial view? Street view? Zoning overview? Future land use? Staff recommendation, staff support to propose zone change. Proposed motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change? In favor of the zone change? Anybody who wishes to speak against the zone change? Against the zone change? All right. Any questions from staff?
What is it? What is the proposed use?
Ace Hardware.
Ace Hardware Store, yes.
So why does it say in the notes that that a B1 can held, right? That's what it says? Can be held with an Ace Hardware, and he wants to change it to a B3?
The only thing, well, they're not here to talk on it, but the only thing we can think of is outside in storage, inventory. Sometimes they put stuff out in the parking lot.
And that doesn't apply with the B1?
Everything has to be inside the B1.
That's right.
All right, so will.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Dovalina and a second by Commissioner Daniela. All those in favor of the motion to approve? Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. Thank you. The next item, amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Laredo by rezoning approximately 7.69 acres. This is located at Oh, is it?
It's an abstract. It's an abstract.
7.69 acres situated out of the Justin Sanchez original grantee, abstract 282, City of Laredo, being out of a certain 1,450 acres of land conveyed to Delphina Benavies Alexander Josepina Lexen Gonzalez, recorded in volume 414, pages 502 to 507, Webb County, Texas, subsequently conveyed to Alexander Residential Development Company Limited Partnership, 978 acres, as per deed, recorded in Webb County from R1 single-family residential district to B3, I'm sorry, R1 and B3 to B4 highway commercial. Property is located west of Bob Bullock Loop and east of Josepina Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, applicant is Premium Tierra LLC. Owner? Daniel Tejera Jr. is the representative. The property description is approximately 7.69 acres located west of Bob Bullock Loop and east of Josepina Drive. The zone change is from an R1 and B3 to a B4. The proposed use is commercial. The applicant did not identify the proposed, specified proposed commercial use. Letter sent 14 inside the 200 foot for zero against zero. Outside the 200 foot is 1 for zero against. Location view? Street, aerial map? Street view? Zoning overview? Future land use? Staff recommendation, staff support to propose zone change. Proposed motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change? In favor of the zone change?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Danny Tejera for the record, and I'm here to speak in favor of the zone change and answer any questions you may have.
Anybody in the commission have any questions for Mr. Tejera?
Just a quick question. Do you know what the proposed use will be?
Unfortunately, we do not. At this time, the property owner is basically, their intent is to get the highest and best zoning designation, eventually platted just to be ready to just have it prepped and ready to go.
Is it next to the fire station and the police substation?
It's just north, yes, sir. Northwest.
Are there any objections from the fire department?
There would be objections. I mean, there's no reason why we'd object.
Don't you go out on Bob Bullock Loop to answer all your calls?
See, but we should still build the access.
Any other questions in the commission from Mr. Tejera? Thank you, Mr. Tejera. Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change? In favor of the zone change? Anybody who wishes to speak against the zone change? Against the zone change? All right. What are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Luvo and a second by?
Second.
By Danny. All right. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. Next item, amending the zoning ordinance for the City of Laredo by rezoning lot 6, block 6, Country Club Estate subdivision located 101 Santra Circle from an R1, single-family residential district to R2 multifamily residential district.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, applicant is City of Laredo, Community Development Municipal Housing is the applicant. Humberto Delgado is the representative. Property description, lot 6, block 6, Country Club Estate subdivision located at 101 Santra Circle. Zone change request, R1 to R2. Proposed use, a duplex. Letter sent 14 for zero against zero. Location view? Aerial map? Street view? Zoning overview? Future land use? Staff recommendation, staff support to propose zone change. Proposed motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change? In favor of the zone change?
Good afternoon. Humberto Delgado for the record, City of Laredo Community Development Department, Municipal Housing Division. This property is owned by the City of Laredo. It was obtained through a noise abatement grant. It was handed over to Municipal Housing so we could do all the necessary repairs and then lease it at an affordable rate. This house is approximately 1,600 square feet, and we see the opportunity here to convert it into a duplex so we can have, you know, two dual entrances that are just
And the lot is a, it's a huge lot. It's about 8,000 or almost 9,000 square foot lots. My question is, what took you so long? I mean, because I bought that property. The city bought that property. What? I bought it. I don't know, 15, 20 years ago. Any questions for Mr. Delgado? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor? In favor of the zone change? Anybody who wishes to speak against the zone change? Against the zone change? All right. What are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion to close public hearing and support staff recommendation.
We have a motion from Commissioner Narvise. A second from?
Doalina. He won.
Commissioner Doalina.
We all want to support him.
All right. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Laredo by rezoning lot 2, block 7A, Pas del Norte subdivision, unit 1, located at 4310 Los Martinez Drive from R3 to B3.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Applicant is Maribel Cisneros Velasquez. She's the owner, and Oscar O. Velasquez is the applicant. The property description, lot 2, block 7A, Pas del Norte subdivision, unit 1, located at 4310 Los Martinez Drive. The zone change is from an R3 to a B3. The proposed use is a car lot. Letter sent 25 for zero against one. Location view? Aerial view? Street view? Zoning overview? Future land use? Staff recommendation, staff does not support the proposed zone change. Proposed motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change? In favor of the zone change? Yes, sir? Si.
Lo que pasa que yo quiero hacer un un nombre para el archivo, por favor. Ah, Oscar Velasquez, soy el aplicante. Quiero hacer el cambio de la zona porque alrededor hay talleres ahí, pero todos están irregulares, pero yo quiero hacerlo legalmente. Pero en realidad, mis vecinos, todo lo que es de esos pedazos de lado es de mi mamá, lo de atrás es de mi mamá, y lo de un lado también. Sabes, vecinos alrededor no tenemos. Entonces quiero hacer, si no se puede hacer un taller, un carlot, pues le perdió un taller para mecánica ligera.
Okay?
That's all.
Any questions?
Is this a residential area?
Yes.
Yes, it is. I remember some years ago when it almost got completely flooded.
2010? Totally flooded. I walked here. All right? You have a question?
I think there's somebody.
Anybody else have a question?
There's somebody out there.
Yes, ma'am.
Yo vivo enfrente de donde está el terreno de los señores, del señor. Este, mi pregunta es, este, ahí tienen puros carros como de junker. So nos podría afectar a nosotros porque ni vivo enfrente y tengo nietos, tengo mis hijos. Todos tenemos ahí familia enfrente y todo eso está cerrado y hay puros carro de junker. Carros sin usos.
Okay.
A mí no me beneficia.
Okay. Usted está en contra del cambio de la zona, ¿verdad?
Pues es que en qué me va a beneficiar? Va a haber mucho tráfico, mucho tráfico. Se supone que es una dead end ahí. So en qué, en qué me beneficiaría? O sea, quisiera yo saber qué es lo que beneficia o en qué me afecta. Yo vivo ahí, tengo 10 años viviendo ahí. Y se supone que allí, para construir y para tener algo, tiene que poner algo a siete pies arriba porque es una zone de inundación. De hecho, yo tenía una propiedad ahí y los dueños me ofrecieron una propiedad enfrente precisamente porque se me fue todo lo que yo tenía ahí. Ellos me ofrecieron el terreno donde vivo ahora. So no sé qué es lo que pueden hacer ellos si le piden estar a siete pies.
Is the property toward the river?
Sí, está en la, después de esa propiedad sí que no.
It's on the wall. On the street.
It's right on the wall.
Sí.
So, looking at the aerial, I see the proposed property that's asking for the zone change, but you can look at 08, 06, 04, 02. There's a whole bunch of cars going on there. So is that part of their deal or is that separate or?
No, it's
Did you own those?
They own those, but we're specifically looking at 4310 on this case. But we did take note to
So like an enforcement issue in that situation, right?
That's right.
Okay.
So when you build a car lot, why would you build a car lot inside a residential area and a flood zone? And who moves the cars when it gets flooded?
That would be an issue.
This is a public hearing. Anybody else who wishes to speak for or against? For or against the zone change? For or against? All right. What are the wishes of the commission?
Move to deny.
There are a motion for Commissioner Dovalina.
Second.
And a second for Commissioner Villarreal. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. Next item. Amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Laredo by authorizing a special use permit for oil and/or gas extraction and production, plug or abandonment on approximately 1 acres, being out of 60.91 acre tract, conveyed to Sacred Heart Children's Home. This is located west of US Highway 83 and north of Lomas del Sur Boulevard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Sacred Heart Children's Home Inc. is the owner. Columbus Energy LLC is the applicant, and Billy Granger is the representative. Property description, approximately 1 acre, located west of US Highway 83 and north of Lomas del Sur Boulevard. The zone change request, it's a special use permit for plug and abandonment of the well. The proposed use, the plug and abandonment of the well, oil and/or gas extraction and production. Letter sent 4 for zero against zero. Location view? Aerial map? Street view? Zoning overview? Future land use? Staff recommendation, staff support to propose SUP.
Thank you.
Proposed motion? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, this is procedural.
And I will. As a matter of fact, what I was gonna ask you is I was gonna ask you to change the land development code and make this a permit that you can issue. I don't believe it needs to come here. This is an administrative matter and it's just a process that I don't think it needs to be that long. I think it should just go where somebody can just say, you know what? This is all you're gonna do because a special use permit to do the plug-in is like, somebody, I don't think.
Well, we still have to take this to city council.
I understand, but what I'm saying is that you need to look at amending that, you know, and, and just making it a little simpler because there's nothing else you can do. All they're trying to do is these are wells that were built at seventy-eight and up, I guess, somewhere in there. You know, it's under seventies and eighties, so they're giving out. But that's my recommendation to you all to eventually get this amendment done so that it doesn't have to come this way through a special use permit and stuff like that. All right, this is a public hearing on issuing out a special use permit, anybody who wishes to speak in favor, in favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against, against the issuance of this permit? All right, what are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have one question, okay, before we give them.
Is this well listed on the orphan well list that the state has for plugging wells?
My name's Billy Granger, I work for Columbus Energy. This well is located right in front of the, the orphanage.
No, the, the, the question I'm asking, is it on the orphan well list that the state has?
No, sir, no, sir. It belongs to Columbus Energy, it's no longer economical to produce it, so we're gonna plug it. It's just a water, basically a water well now.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Granger? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Lugo and a second from Daniela. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, motion carries. The next item, amending the zoning ordinance of the city used by authorizing a special use permit for oil and gas extraction. Uh, this, uh, particular well is located south of Alegria Street and west of Texas Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Watson Laredo Company, LLC is the owner, Columbus Energy LLC is the applicant, and Billy Granger is the representative. The property description is approximately point-five-three acres located south of Alegria Street and west of Texas Drive. The zone change request, it is a special use permit for a plug and abandonment of a well. The proposed use, plug and abandonment of a well. Letter sent, twelve, four, zero, against, zero. Location view? Aerial view? Street view? Zoning overview? Future land use? Staff recommendation, staff supports the proposed SUP. Proposed motion? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak for or against, for or against the issuance of this special use permit? Yes, sir?
Yeah, my name is Malo Rosendoa. Uh, I'm not too sure if I'm for or against, I just want some clarification, you know, being one of the residents right in front of it. So, I don't know if anybody here can answer, just simple questions, right? Like what do we have to worry about, uh, being in such close proximity to, to the area?
Probably Mr. Granger is in the best situation to answer, can you answer the question, Mr. Granger?
Yes, sir.
Would you come up, please?
What we'll do is we'll move up, what they call a workover rig, we'll bring a rig in and, uh, they'll hook it up to the flow lines, pipeline, to a tank, we'll blow it down. It don't have, it has six hundred pounds on it and it's been there forever and it's, that's not very much gas. So what we do is we blow it down, fill the well with water and then we'll try to release the packer, which is a tubing. And if the tubing comes out we'll go ahead and, and, uh, this is what it looks like right now. It's got the tubing down inside the casing, there's your purse. So we'll pull this out of the way and then we'll fill this cavity up with nine-point-five-pound mud and then we'll set a cement plug, right there. And then we gotta come up and protect the liner, there's a liner right here where you got casing so we won't contaminate any freshwater. And then we start sitting our cement plugs and then we cut off all the equipment three foot below the ground and just keep it all it off. Long term, you have to worry about anything? I mean, I don't know if there's gonna be houses built there or something. It'll be below the surface and when we cut that casing at top, we weld a cap on it. So it's welded, I mean it's cemented, no, you won't have no problem. Okay, and there's two wells there, or I'm not too sure, they're both wells or is it just that one? No, it's just that well, the other one's equipment. Equipment, okay. It's like the pipeline and, uh, and the line heater, all of that will be removed. All right, and, uh, I guess the other question would be how, how many hours are they gonna be, right? We work there in the day, they'll start about seven in the morning, they'll work till like five, we'll probably be out of there in three days. With no problems, I think about three days. I'm sorry, thank you for the peace of mind, thank you for giving me a chance to come up.
Sure.
You're welcome to stop by and look at it, let us. Thank you, sir. All right, thank you.
You, you remove the flow line when you do the operation as well or you said the?
We remove the flow line right there on the location, but we don't remove the pipeline. What we do is we cut the pipeline three foot below surface, that's where they ninety up and then we cap it and then we cap it at the other end.
Okay.
So we flush the pipeline with fresh water, make sure there's no hydrocarbon, and we cap both ends and it's underground.
What are the wishes of the commission?
Move to approve.
We have a motion from Commissioner Dolina and a second from Daniela. All those in favor of the special use permit signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those against, motion carries. Next item. Amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by authorizing the issuance of a special use permit for a restaurant serving alcohol on lot seventeen A and lot nineteen, block twenty-seven, Carlton Gardens subdivision, number one, located six-twenty West Carlton Road, Suite B.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the applicant is Expressway sixteen eighty-eight Realty LLC is the owner, Laredo Surfing LLC is the applicant, and Rebecca Regal, Regalado is the representative. Description is lot seventeen A and lot nineteen, block twenty-seven, Carlton Gardens subdivision. Number one, located at six-twenty West Carlton Road, Suite B, seven thousand square feet. The zone change request, it is a special use permit for a restaurant serving alcohol. The proposed use, restaurant serving alcohol, surfing crab. Letter sent, twenty-five, four, zero, against, zero. Location view? Aerial view? Street view? Zoning overview? Future land use? Staff recommendation, staff supports the proposed SUP. Proposed motion? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I have a question for staff before we go forward. Seven thousand square foot facility. Old Emperor Garden, it's.
It's the old Emperor Garden.
Okay. And there is adequate parking for the whole development there? Parking is, is tight. Um, but if I'm not mistaken, go ahead, you can come up, you can come up. Um, you're in remodeling stage right now.
Right, right, right. My name is Ming, I'm, I'm the owner of the surfing crab, also the construction manager for all the surfing crabs. Right now we are fixing all the plaza with all the holes you guys mentioned, like we are fixing the whole plaza, the parking.
Okay, how many tables are you gonna have?
Uh, right now, probably rough, roughly around forty to fifty.
Forty-two?
Around forty to fifty.
What's the parking requirement for that? We have it on there, I know it's.
Eighty-four?
Eighty-four, how many parking spaces total in this plaza?
One hundred and.
One thirty-seven.
One thirty-seven.
One thirty-two, sorry.
All right, so you are speaking in favor of the special use permit, right, sir?
Right.
All right, any questions for you? No questions, thank you very much for your input. All right, anybody else who wishes to speak in favor of the special use permit? Anybody who wishes to speak against the special use permit? All right, what are the wishes of the commission?
I'm moved to close public hearing and support staff recommendation for the special use permit.
We have a motion by Commissioner Nardice and a second by Commissioner Villarreal. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, motion carries. Next item is amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by rezoning lot two, block one, Los Pinos subdivision located at thirty-four thirteen Pine Street from R one to R two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sevales Realty LLC is the owner and the applicant, Liliana Sevales is the representative. The property description is lot two, block one, Los Pinos subdivision, located at thirty-four thirteen Pine Street. The zone change request is from an R one to an R two, the proposed use is duplexes. Letter sent, thirty-eight, four, zero, against, one. Location view? Aerial view? Street view? Zoning overview? Future land use? Staff recommendation, staff does not support the proposed zone change. Proposed motion? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, this is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak for his own change? Yes, sir?
Chairman, I'm Roberto Borg, my name's Enrique Sevales, buenas tardes. Yo vengo a hablar a favor. Como pueden ver, queremos cambiar la zona a R dos por motivo de, de un duplex que queremos construir ahí mismo. Si me permiten mostrarles el... Como pueden ver, la, les, la, los lotes, la manera en que están hechos están extremadamente grandes, son dieciocho mil pies cuadrados y, y se está desperdiciando todo el área de atrás, tenemos la casa enfrente y atrás está completamente solo. No sé por qué están así los, los, los lotes, me imagino que aquí debería haber habido una, una calle de salida que en algún momento no se hizo, pero, um, si pueden observar, um... Donde las propiedades de al lado están completamente descuidadas. La, la parte de atrás de las, de las casas, no nada más el, el terreno de nosotros, sino casi todos están, eh, desperdiciados atrás. Y nosotros queremos aprovechar el, el, el área del terreno para construir un duplex.
Hoy te dices que tienes una casa enfrente?
En, la casa enfrente, sí.
Y piensas construir, pegar y desacarregar.
No, quiero construir una casa atrás que sea multifamiliar para poder tener dos, dos unidades.
O quieres construir un duplex en, en la?
En la parte de atrás, sí.
El, el solar tiene treinta y dos pies de ancho, ¿verdad?
Sí.
Y luego le quitas diez, cinco y cinco de setbacks, so te van a quedar veintitrés, veintitrés pies para hacer construcción. Y luego para el estacionamiento y todo, pues no tienes entrada.
Aquí tenemos más o menos un plan, que hablamos con un, eh, ingeniero. Uh, este sería más o menos el área, el duplex quedaría aquí atrás y todavía hay mucho espacio para el estacionamiento.
¿Y por dónde entra?
Aquí está el ismen, por un lado.
Pero si son veintitrés pies.
He's gonna use the setback as an entrance.
And it's fine, but you still don't have enough, that's five. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. El terreno, no tengo foto de la, frente de la casa, pero ya está el ismen por un lado de la casa, hay, hay un pasillo para hasta atrás.
Ah, mira aquí también, aquí tiene uno, mira. Es como la, como alquiler. Aquí.
No, es el único terreno que está, este, en R dos, ya, hay un terreno aquí atrás también. Y todo el área de, de... Todo el área de atrás, del terreno de nosotros es R tres, toda esta área es R tres. Nada más los terrenos de al lado, los que son R uno.
Okay.
Pues la razón principal es que queremos aprovechar el, 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 el terreno al máximo, ¿verdad? Que no se desperdicie.
Okay, any questions for the commissioners?
No, I could just badly plan it.
¿Y qué se podría hacer en esa, en esa?
I'm not sure, cause you don't have control of your properties.
Ya, déjame contarte algo, lo que te puso el ingeniero que te hizo el, el, qué, qué tamaño de, de, de vivienda te puse ahí. ¿Qué son las dimensiones?
Creo que son seis mil.
El seis mil?
Ah, seis mil, uh, square feet.
Del, del solar, donde va a ser?
No, del tamaño del, del.
Es, pero el, el edificio es, qué tantos pies, por qué tantos pies de largo.
El que ya está construido, el que queremos construir.
Piense, piense.
Ah, todavía no hemos formulado exactamente, pero tendría que ser a código, ¿verdad?, para que se pueda hacer. No tenemos las, las, um, las medidas exactas. Abuelo llegando al río nos quitamos los zapatos. Lo, lo principal es, este, pues cambiar la zona para poder proceder nosotros.
Pues es que. Sí.
Es, es lo que, es lo que pasa, lo que estoy viendo, yo que... Está muy problemático, para que...
El ismen ya lo tenemos en un lado.
Pero ahí no cabe, no cabe un carro.
Oh, sí.
Sí cabe, cabe.
Sí, entran y cae, de hecho, esta área de aquí es el carpa, del, 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 de la casa de atrás.
No, no la van a dejar construir.
No son más otros. Okay, any other questions, any questions? No, gracias. Anybody else who wishes to speak for or against, for or against his own change? For or against?
Staff does not support it.
Staff does not support him, no change?
Staff does not support his own change.
Anybody else who wishes to speak for or against, for or against?
So, so basically the, the, he can't build based on the setbacks and then if he would, if, if he would need at least ten feet so that a vehicle could come in. So he could only, whatever he builds can only be.
Only one.
Eighteen feet wide.
Exactly, exactly.
And do, do like our current codes not allow that or?
Yes.
It is too.
It's residential, so it's for a single family, you know, I know the lots off, um, I thought, back in the day, I thought maybe this was a place where there was a gas well or something to that effect. And when they designed it or something, I don't know why it was.
I think it was designed for mobile homes, way back.
That's, looking at the lot size, that makes sense. If, this is probably, that whole area at one time was looked at to be mobile homes, way back, just an awkward size.
Bueno, una pre, una pregunta. Nomás para tratar de ayudarle al joven. Y si pone, no puede meter mobile homes?
Tiene la casa enfrente.
Ah, porque tiene la casa enfrente.
This, this is it.
Y the codes, no la puede, ni un lado para.
So si le dices aquí que sí, allá llorón, okay. All right, what are the wishes of the commission?
I'm moved to deny.
We have a motion for Commissioner Dolina and a second from?
Nardice.
Nardice. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those against, motion carries. Next item, reviewing consideration of the following master plan. Review and revision of the Pinnacle Industrial Center master plan, the intent is industrial. The purpose of this revision is to combine lots and remove acreage in unit thirteen.
Mr. Chairman, uh, we got a message from the engineer, he's on his way over here. Uh, he said he concurs with the comments, but he's on his way, if you wanna hold off on this one, maybe table it and go on to the next, he'll be here to answer any questions unless you would like to.
Who's the engineer?
Yellipin.
Yellipin.
Why don't you go ahead and just go with the presentation and if there are questions that the commission needs answers to, then at that point in time we'll just.
Yes, sir.
Uh, suspend it until he gets here.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is FM fourteen-seventy-two Investments. Engineer is Giltham Engineering Company, the proposed use is industrial, the zoning for this eighty lot development is AG and M one. Any portion is unzoned as it is currently outside the city limits. Location view? Aerial view? The proposed and the revision of the master plan? Comments from planning? Comments from traffic? And the proposed motion?
I guess the issue would be if he's in agreement with the comments, um.
He's in agreement.
He didn't say that he wasn't. Oh, if he's in agreement with the comments, then, okay, so then what are the wishes of the commission?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Commissioner Daniela and a second from Commissioner Dolina?
Yes.
Subject to the comments.
Subject to.
Comments.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those against, motion carries. I do wanna thank all the engineers who are here. Cause they, they're all here listening, so. Yeah, because I did say last time that if you weren't here, I was gonna table your plat, that's right, so. Luckily, he called in and said he was in agreement with the comments, otherwise it would have been tabled.
I think that's the why he called in.
Yeah. If you want my cell number, let me know. Next item is a review and consideration of the J and H Commercial Park subdivision master plan, the intent is commercial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, applicant is J and H Rentals, engineer is Crane Engineering, the proposed use is commercial. The zoning for this ten lot development is M one, R one, and a portion is outside the city limits. Location view? Aerial view? Street view? The proposed master plan? Comments from planning? Engineering? Fire and traffic? And the proposed motion?
All right, yes, sir?
Yes, uh, Alfredo Martinez with Crane Engineering, for the record, chairman and members of this commission. Uh, we're in agreement with most of the comments, the one comment that we've already kind of had a discussion with staff earlier today is on comment number five, which is asking us to... asking us to eliminate the reserve that we're showing there on our master plan. Provide a sixty-foot wide roadway, uh, right-of-way and a roadway, and for the developer to construct their half of this, I guess, at this time. So what we would like to do is, uh, we agree with removing the reserve, but in that, what we would like to do is revise the master plan boundary to, uh, I have a drawing of it now, just to demonstrate what that would look like. Basically, instead of showing that roadway, so what we did here is eliminate the reserve. This is the new boundary, and have whatever future right-of-way needs to be addressed be handled in the future once other developers come and and, um, wanna do something with their land. So I guess what we'd be asking for is uh, approval subject to that revision and eliminating those two comments related to the sixty-foot right-of-way and constructing half the roadway.
Well, basically, what you did is you just switched the original submittal. Is that correct?
Right, yeah, we're-
Because you redid, you know, your your drawing was redone. These comments were were adhered for the original submittal. So, Orde, are you guys?
Updating?
I mean, do you all have the new submittal, or?
I mean, I think what he's doing is he's showing you what he's gonna present
Yes.
to us. So we we haven't seen that yet.
Okay.
But that's one of his proposed options to to show us. So he'll be bringing that to the table.
But you agree with what he's gonna do?
We have to look at it. One of the things that that when, what by putting reserve on here, what he's doing is, uh, he's saying, look, we're gonna reserve this land, and if the city wants to build a street in the future, the land is there, go ahead and build it. We're not, we're not accepting that. We're asking him as a developer to develop it, okay? I think what they're proposing here is they're, instead of leaving a reserve, they're gonna, they're gonna build all the way, or they're gonna, um, take in that property, and they're gonna leave the burden of the road to the neighboring, um, property owners.
Right, or, yeah, or be handled separately outside of this development, right?
Um, but next to you, you have current, i- it's not empty land. It's currently built built out, isn't it?
I believe so.
Can you put the, can you put the aerial for back, put the aerial back so we can see?
So you've not seen what he's presenting?
Yeah, we, we just talked earlier this afternoon with Rafael.
We had a conversation, we just didn't really see the, to the drawing.
You did it today?
Yeah.
Just before the meeting?
Right, just to have something to look at based off of it.
I won't table until staff has a chance to review. I don't think it's acceptable to do something like this after your items are on the agenda and the comments are already there, and they surprise you with something totally different.
Now, what you could do, I think what he's asking for you to do is to eliminate comment number five. What you could do is, um, well, I don't wanna tell you what you can do, but I mean, you could leave it on there.
I think I made my motion clear.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? We have a second from Commissioner Villarreal. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye? I will be abstaining from this item.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those against? One against. The ayes have it, we're tabling it. All right. The next item that we have is tabled, is that correct? Item seven C is tabled?
You have a request from the applicant?
Yes, sir. So then we're going to-
The next, the next one is tabled.
Consideration of the following preliminary flats and preliminary replats. Preliminary consideration of the plat, uh, Pinnacle Industrial Center, aftermarket fourteen seventy-two, unit six. The intent is light industrial.
The applicant is FM fourteen seventy-two Investments. Engineer Gilpin Engineering Company.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, can you make a motion to table the the pre, the item that that was right before this, that the applicant requested to table? So we could have an action that you tabled.
All right. Motion to table from Commissioner Daniela and a second from Commissioner Villarreal?
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye? Item seven C has been tabled.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
The applicant is FM forty-two, uh, uh, fourteen seventy-two Investments. Engineer Gilpin Engineering Company. Proposed use light industrial. The zoning for this five lot development is M one. Any portion is unzoned as it is currently outside the city limits. The location view? The aerial view? The proposed plat? Staff comments, planning? Traffic safety? The proposed motion?
Can you, can you go back to the
The area?
To the area?
This is pinnacle? On the back, the back side?
The back side?
Yes.
One more round?
Right. Well, we don't have the engineer here.
Which one are we?
We are on, uh,
Eight A.
Item eight A. Well.
Where the key? Where the key?
Say what we'll do. Let's go ahead and, uh, table this until the end of the meeting. See if this engineer shows up.
Yep.
If he doesn't, then the item will have to be tabled. So can I have a motion to table it?
Motion to table, time certain.
No, till the end of the meeting.
Oh, till the end of the meeting.
And then we'll take it as the last item. We have a second from Commissioner Villarreal. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right. The next item is preliminary consideration of the plat of the J and H Commercial subdivision phase one. The intent is commercial. Well, this was, uh, the master plan is tabled. So, I mean, I don't think we can take action on this if the master plan is tabled. So we need a motion.
Motion, motion table, me?
We have a motion and a second to table this item. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
I will abstain from this item too.
Uh, who made the motion?
Motion was made by Commissioner Nardice, and a second by Commissioner De Valena. Next item, preliminary consideration of Las Adelas, commercial phase one plat, the intent is commercial.
Las Aldeas.
Aldeas. Close enough for government work, though. All right.
Yes, sir. Uh, the applicant is Matthew Long, engineer, KCI, uh,
Technologies.
Proposed use commercial. The zoning for this development is B one. The location view? The aerial view? The street view? The proposed plat? Staff comments, planning, and engineering? Uh, the proposed motion?
All right, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Jeff Wig, KCI Technologies, representing the applicant. Uh, here to answer any questions you have regarding this two-acre commercial plant.
Any questions here, Mr. Wig?
We concur with staff comments.
No questions, sir. All right. Thank you. What are the wishes of the commission? We have Commissioner De Valena just made a motion and a second by Commissioner Daniela. All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is reconsideration of the following preliminary flats and preliminary replats. Item nine A, preliminary reconsideration of the plat of Las Lomas del Sur subdivision, unit twenty-three. The intent is commercial. The purpose of the reconsideration is to reconfigure lots two into three lots. Two lots into three lots, I'm sorry.
The applicant is ALS Laredo Holdings. Engineer, Sherfy Engineering Company. Proposed use commercial. The zoning for this two lot development is B one. The location view? The aerial view? The street view? The proposed plat? Staff comments, planning, and traffic safety? And the proposed motion?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Frank Assash, Sherfy Engineering. Uh, we concur with staff comments.
Any questions for Mr. Estrada? Thank you, Mr. Estrada.
Thank you.
What are the wishes? Commissioner Daniela moves to approve?
Second.
And a second from Commissioner De Valena. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is a consideration of the following final flats and final replats. Let me ask you a quick question on ten A. Is there an issue with ten A? No? I'm just wondering, because my communication is highlighted, so I just wondered if it was. So there's no problem, right?
Engineer, um, sent an email that he concurd with comments.
Okay.
Not here at the moment. He left, um, I left you a copy.
Yeah, okay, so we're final anyway. All right. Well, let's go ahead and take, uh, items ten and eleven. We need a motion to take them together, they're all final concurrences anyway. Take them both at the same time. We have a motion from Commissioner De Valena and a second from Commissioner
Yo.
Daniela? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right? Just a minute. Now we need a motion to approve.
When?
He has to mean it.
Do we hear, do I hear a motion to approve items ten and eleven?
Yes.
Motion from Daniela and a second from Commissioner Villarreal? All those in favor of approval signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries on ten and eleven. Unfortunately, we are at the end of our agenda, and Commissioner Gilpin did not show up. His item is tabled. As per the motion before, it was tabled to the end of the meeting, he's still not here. The item stays tabled. Motion to adjourn?
Time, time certain to, till next meeting?
Time certain, till the next meeting.
It's up to the engineer.
Can you make a motion on that to to to, uh, table this item time certain, please?
We did make a motion, well-
You made a motion to put it at the end?
We did, we tabled it and said we can re-listen to it at the end of the meeting.
Right.
But since there is no need to re-listen to it, stays tabled. The engineer's not here.
Well, I understand, I'm, I just wanted to tape, you know, go on record and say you tabled it.
You want another motion? We'll give you another motion.
Motion to table to time certain.
One and six, two. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, there you go. Got it. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? And a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye? Very good. Thank you all very much.